Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the February 18th, 2015 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We have no changes to the agenda.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we've got two sets of minutes, December the 17th and January the 7th.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption at both minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. We have, I think, a number of committee reports. Mr. Unger, did DRC meet yet for this month?
I missed that meeting.
Okay, all righty. Transportation, Mr. Oates?
Yes, ma'am. We met on Monday, January 26th, had three items discussed. One was abandonment request by Coriel Watt on Golden's Orchard Road. Basically, he owns all the land around the road, dead ends in the property, so he's requesting it be abandoned, keep the public works and buildings in his orchard. The second was a possible proper modification to Pettigame Gap Lane out behind Walmart on 50. They're proposing to keep the right-of-way the same, however, build a smaller road section since it's basically a service road behind Walmart and had been called for highway. And then the second, or excuse me, the third item was an update on the House Bill 2.
That's what I thought, I couldn't remember the name.
Standards for road funds. It's still ongoing, they haven't resolved anything yet, so we don't know if we'll have our funding for 277 or not.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bone, comp plans.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the comp plan committee met last Monday, the 9th. We only had one item on the agenda. We discussed the Kernstown area plan, and it was a really good discussion. That'll be discussed with the full commission at the retreat on Saturday.
Thank you, thank you so much. I don't see anyone here from the Winchester Planning Commission. Mr. Kenny, did you?
Yes, I did attend that, Madam Chairman. They had two items on their agenda. The first was the adopting and a public hearing on larger signage along the Amherst Street corridor in the corridor enhancement district, just a different way of calculating those square footages. The second one was a more highly debated item they had, and they tabled it for 60 days. That was the rezoning and change in 19 building lots on Linden Drive up by the Frederick County Middle School to into duplexes and townhouses. And that was tabled for 60 days, and that was their two items they had yesterday.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Hess, from the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the Board of Supervisors has held three regular meetings since the last Planning Commission meeting on January 7th as a result of the second Planning Commission meeting being canceled in January. So on January 14th, the Board received and approved a request from the applicant for the heritage commons rezoning to postpone the hearing until March, the March 11th Board of Supervisors meeting. And then, as recommended by the Planning Commission, the Board also approved the request to waive a Category C buffer requirement which met the criteria in the zoning ordinance. Then on our meeting on January 28th, the Board discussed the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for inclusion of the Blaine property in the sewer and water service area and the Capital Improvement Plan and agreed to move both of them forward for public hearing. There were no Planning Commission items on the February 11th Board meeting agenda.
Thank you, thank you very much. While we're talking about committees, I'd like to make the appointments from the commission and from all the citizens that have volunteered, and since there's so many of you here, if you'd like to work on either one of these committees, all you need to do is let somebody at that table know and we'll sign you up. So, the first committee is the Development Review and Regulations Committee. Mr. Greg Unger, who is the chairman from the Back Creek District, Kevin Kenny, who's vice chairman from Gainesboro District, Gary Oates from the Stonewall District, Larry Ambrosi from Shawnee District, Roger Thomas and I serve ex officio. Citizens, Jay Banks from the Back Creek District, Tim Stowe, also from the Back Creek District, Dwight Schenk, who's a citizen from the Gainesboro District, Whit Wagner, a citizen from the Stonewall District. And again, if you'd like to catch up with Development Review and Reg, these are the people that deal with ordinances and all sorts of interesting things. Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee nominating Mr. Chris Moan, who is chairman. He's from the Redbud District. Gary Oates, who's vice chairman, he's from the Stonewall District. Mr. Rhodes Marston from the Back Creek District. Mr. Paige Manuel from the Shawnee District. Mr. Robert S. Molden from the Opeken District. Roger and I, again, serve ex officio. And Chuck Dunlap from the Redbud District. For our citizens for that committee, Mr. James W. Holliday from Stevens City, who's a former Planning Commission member and chairman. Kay Dawson, a citizens member from the Redbud District. And Tony Morelli, also a citizens appointment from the Opeken District. So that does it for our groups for the year, and we thank you all for serving. Okay, our first item, oh, before we get started here, there are a number of you here which amazed me, I didn't think we'd have many folks being with us this evening. On our agenda are two public hearings, and they are the Capital Improvement Plan and the Comp Plan Amendment. Some of you may be here to speak about rezoning 05-14 CB Ventures down on Ailer Road. If you want to comment on that, we do not have a public hearing because we already did that, if you'll recall. So you may go ahead and give whatever comments you would like to make to us during the citizens' comment portion, which I will now open. So is there anyone who would like to speak to us on anything?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dorothy Carricker. I reside with my husband at 110 Downing Circle in Stevens City. This property is directly behind and abuts one of the parcels, CB Ventures LLC seeks to have rezoned from B1 to B2. I would first like to say that no one begrudges the applicants the opportunity to make a reasonable profit on their investment, but at what expense to me, my neighbors, and our neighborhood? How will this affect our property values? How much will our insurance rates go up due to necessity of extra police and/or fire presence? What happens to our privacy, freedom from light and noise pollution, from a multi-story building looming over us? We are an older, established residential neighborhood of over 40 years where our homes are not all the same cookie cutter design as in the case of newer developments. Yes, there are a few B2 establishments abutting residential areas, but these appear to be newer subdivisions which have not had time to develop into true neighborhoods. We've heard about the proposed buffer, some puny twigs with a few bare limbs and some scraggly evergreens. How many years is it going to take for those plantings to screen a multi-story building? We are informed there will be adequate parking. Will this be all day or night parking, or continuous in-and-out parking? This proposed building will stick out like a sore thumb, completely changing the character of our neighborhood. Simply put, our neighborhood feels any B2 commercial building is not suitable for this small parcel of land. With the demolishing of the existing car wash and the addition of the undeveloped area, the applicant is requesting 2.42 acres be resumed. With two-to-three lane realignment Ailer Road, the usable acreage drops to only 1.9 acre. Whether this takes into consideration the easement from the sidewalk bike path and utilities is not known. If the applicant is allowed to rezone this small parcel, it will appear as a small island in a lake. All the property north along that portion of Ailer Road, as far as the school and beyond, is zone B1 with the exception of two residents. All the remaining property to the south is zone B1. To the east, all the property is zone single-family residential. To allow this small parcel, completely surrounded by B1 and/or residential, to be rezoned to B2 strikes me, as I was taught in school, as being spot zoning and definitely not good area planning. Under Chapter 165 zoning, Article 6, Subparagraph 165, 603.01, intent, this pretty much says it all, that first sentence. And I quote, "The intent of this district is to provide large areas for a variety of business offices and service uses." Does 1.9 plus or minus acres with a road and sidewalk bike path running through it meet this requirement as being a large area? Do we need any more commercial businesses in our area? What could the applicant possibly build that we don't already have within easy walking distance? I've glanced over the allowed businesses in the B2 category and found just about everything listed already in our area with the possible exception of a large box store, housing, maybe furniture or clothing, but I can't imagine anyone driving off the main street Fairfax Pike, winding their way along realigned Ailer Road just to purchase a dress or a chair. And speaking of this, how are people supposed to find this sore thumb? Granted, it will tower above all the other existing structures in the area, but what kind of signage does the applicant propose? How high would the lighting be? And how high would this sign be? As for lighting, the applicant is proposed lighting fixtures to be only a certain height. This might protect his property, but how's it going to keep people away from my home? Are there lights going to shine into my bedroom windows? They state the nearest structure is 75 feet away. That structure isn't a barn, it isn't a warehouse, it's my home. That intervening footage isn't a paved parking lot or landfill, it's my backyard, which over the years we spent thousands of dollars in trees and landscaping. When I look out my back window toward the towering Hulk, will I be looking at its semi store, its face, and see people peering out the windows at me? Or will I be looking at its back with trash cans and semi-stored articles strewn about? There are several already existing buildings and/or vacant lots along Fairfax Pike that are much more suitable for multiple-story buildings. Keep B2 zoning on Fairfax Pike, not Ailer Road. One thing I have not addressed so far, but is of great concern for our neighborhood, is safety. Realigned Ailer Road from its present location to its proposed relocation to Intersequo Stickley Drive will be a block east of its present location. Somewhere along the route, in a relatively short distance, it will have to make a curve. Anytime there's a curve in a road, there's a potential for accidents. Ailer Road along this stretch is particularly busy during school bus and going to and from work hours. I have seen traffic backed up as far as Hyde Park, Hyde Court, excuse me. With additional traffic attempting to enter or exit this proposed rezoned area, even with construction of several entrances, this could become a nightmare. It seems logical to me, the more entrances and/or exits to Ailer Road, the more potential for accidents. And what about the schoolchildren, walking, skateboarding, or riding their bikes dodging traffic? Remember, this parcel is only a few blocks from the school. If the proposed building is to be open past normal business hours, this becomes another safety concern for our neighborhood. We strongly urge this committee to not allow our comfort and quality of life be disrupted by this rezoning request. Thank you, and drive safely going home.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on anything else, or again, if you'd like to make another comment about this rezoning?
Good evening. My name is Alan Moak. I live at 111 Downing Circle, across the street from the Carrickers. Right now, with the buildings that are in place, there is a structure that has a light on the side of it, a big, huge light that lights up the fellow's property. It's a dentist, and he claims that he needs it for security. Well, this comes pouring right into my living room window, and it's an annoyance, and I have to have my shades drawn every night because of this. I can't enjoy the outside. I'm concerned if this, we don't know what is proposed by the people that want to do this, have this rezoning. They've not come forward and stated what property, how they're going to develop the property. I'm concerned if they put a 50-foot hotel on it, those lights from those rooms are going to come across the roof of the Carrickers and come and expose my house significantly. And so I have a, my concern is that, I don't think we need it because we've got other motels in the neighborhood. If you go up and down 277 Fairfax Road, there's all kinds of businesses, and just three miles down the road is Walmart. So we have plenty of things. I don't understand what the purpose of going to a B2 in a residential neighborhood serves any of the neighborhood to any degree. So I would recommend that the committee does not pass this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
My name's Ulysses Kirk. I live at 110 Downing Circle, Stevens City, with my wife. Oh, by the way, Hyde Park may not be exaggeration. We're not ogres out there. Why doesn't these people come by and talk to us? Everybody that's putting out there has so far. Sager, he came around and gave me a map and, you know, unfortunately, he's been dead several years, but Steeble, when he put his office in, and I think somebody else also, but that's what I'd recommend, is for him to come by and talk to us. And, you know, the man needs to make some business, he must make money, and, but at the same time, I don't want to get crushed either, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us regarding anything else? All right, we will close the citizen comment portion. We will open now our first public hearing, which is the 2015-2016 Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by various county departments and agencies, and the plan is created as an informational component of the 2030 comp plan. Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is here in front of us this evening as a public hearing item. We've had a discussion on this before, earlier in January, and of course, it's gone through the Comprehensive Plan Committee. The Comp Plan Committee endorsed it at the end of last year. So this evening, the task for the Planning Commission after the public hearing is to determine if the CIP is in conformance with the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and forward a recommendation on the CIP in its entirety onto the Board of Supervisors. I'm not going to go into the whole CIP. Certainly, if there are any particular projects or items that need extra attention, we'd be happy to provide a bit more detail. In summary, there is 88 projects within this year's CIP. It's been somewhat consistent over recent years, and of course, it continues to reinforce the connection between the Capital Improvement Plan and the county's Comprehensive Plan in addition to rezonings. It's a planning document, of course, it is not a budget document, the Board of Supervisors ultimately will deal with that in future budgets as far as the funding of these projects. Again, it's a planning document. That document contains several things, the first of which, of course, is the table that highlights each and every project within the CIP. And again, from public schools through parks and recreation, each of the different items, different projects are listed with a projected cost over the five-year anticipated CIP life. Again, that includes schools, parks and recreation, the regional library, regional airport, county administration, fire and rescue, and transportation. Just take a moment perhaps to recognize some of the folks in the audience today representing those agencies, and we, of course, always appreciate their participation in putting the CIP together. So in addition to the table that identifies all of the projects, there are four general maps that highlight the locations of the projects, again, to gain some consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. The first one deals with those general projects, which include county administration, the library, and the airport. The second map deals with Frederick County Public Schools, current and future locations. The third one deals with Frederick County Parks and Recreation, park sites existing and proposed. And the final one, of course, identifies all of those transportation projects that the county is anticipating through the life, if you will, and the growth of the county. To touch briefly on some of the projects that are moving forward and that have been added, I'll go through that, but hopefully you'll see that within your agenda here this evening, there was an additional document that was provided, which tried to compare this year's with the last year's, previous year's CIPs, and kind of identify those projects that are new and those projects that have moved off. But in summary, some of the projects that are moving forward include the replacement Frederick County Middle School in the Gainesboro District. Several projects have moved off of the airport CIP because parcel acquisition around the runway has occurred, and with fire and rescue, of course, the Round Hill Fire Station, number 15, is currently under construction. Couple of new modified projects. A new one is the Joint Judicial Center renovation slash new facility, a two-phase project to accommodate the additional needs of the court system. Under Parks and Recreation, their number one priority is their pool complex renovations, followed by the Snowden Bridge Park development. And rising towards the top end of the list is the indoor aquatic center, again, having worked with the different entities and seen how parks and recreation and schools have recognized an opportunity in that location. Schools have also added a major renovation to the Dow J. Howard Center, additions and renovations to that project, given the changing technology needs that they see existing in their school system. Public Works have highlighted the citizens' convenience site at Clearbrook. That needs to, of course, be relocated and rebuilt to serve the citizens in that area. Winchester Regional Airport has moved their new general aviation terminal to the top of the list, following recent improvements, of course, to the runway. And generally, the fire and rescue requests remain the same. Again, there are a variety of different individual projects on there. If there are any specific questions, we can try and answer those, but recognizing that hopefully this evening, we can send a recommendation onto the planning, excuse me, onto the Board of Supervisors regarding the CIP, and then again, have the Planning Commission make a determination that it may be in conformance with the county's Comprehensive Plan. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for the commission.
Questions, Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you.
Yes, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak to us regarding the Capital Improvement Plan, this is your time. Come on up and give us your name and magisterial district and offer your comments, please.
Thank you. My name is Tag Grove. I'm the head swim coach of the Winchester Swim Team and Hanley Swim Team, but we won't talk about that tonight. Currently, we have 135 members on our Winchester Swim Team. We've been that way for about five years, and we also have a waiting list. Right now, we swim out of the park both in the summer and winter, and during the winter, we also rent some time over at Westminster Canterbury and put most of our tenant unders in that facility. We are maxed out. We've got 10 kids in a lane, bigger, you know, high school kids in a lane, and just need a place to continue to grow our team. But more than just the swim teams, I think swimming and a new aquatics facility is actually an investment into the community. When businesses look at where to relocate, they typically look at what the area has to offer. If you are choosing between a place that doesn't have a decent parks and rec facility, the business will probably go to an area that does so that their employees may benefit. Aquatics also improve the quality of life. It's an activity you can do until the day you die from being an infant with learning how to swim, all the way up, and it's a good form of exercise. how to swim all the way up, and it's a good form of exercise. Everybody seems to know these things, but yet nobody's willing to take the investment into the community. Local swimming, as I said, we have 135 people, but in the summertime, we run a summer league that has over 700 kids in it. So the people behind me, that's just a small showing of the actual interest that arrives here in, for swimming. So I just urge you all to really consider building a new aquatic facility. We haven't had one for over 30 years, and part of the reason I can't talk is going in and out of there one of these cold nights. So I urge you to take a look at it, and there's some excellent facilities around the area, really within an hour, hour-and-a-half drive, that have been very successful in communities much like ours. You really need to go no further than Warrington for a small town that's put in a very nice facility, and kids are enjoying that probably tonight. They're going in there for swimmin' lessons or swim practice or water aerobics, whatever classes they have. So I'd like to thank you all for at least considering that and for giving me a couple minutes to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to talk to us about anything in the Comprehensive, excuse me, Capital Improvement Plan?
Yeah, if I could just follow up behind Tag Grove there. My name is Jessica DeYoung. I'm the president of Valley Swim Team Phoenix. We swim out of the Strasburg Pool, 20 minutes south of here because there is no other pool time available. I reiterate everything that Tag said in reference to the community needing a facility such as has been proposed. We actually run a swim meet out of the War facility. We have to go an hour away to spend $12,000 to rent that facility. It brings a tremendous amount of income to the area for the times we do rent that pool. So again, just would like to follow up on his comments and say, I think it would be a wonderful addition to our community and provide a life-saving sport that can be continued for a long time in everybody's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone?
Good evening. My name's Will Sigler, and I'm from the Shawnee District. And I'd like to thank you all for letting us speak regarding the indoor aquatics facility. I am representing more than just a swim coach from Millbrook High School. I am representing a dad who is looking for a nice facility that I can take my kids and family to go enjoy some aquatics activities so I don't have to drive 45 to 50 minutes to go to a nice facility. And yes, mostly it is for the high school swim team. And you're lucky that we get to be here because our state swim meet was postponed until Friday. So down in Christiansburg, which is a very nice facility that Virginia Tech uses. So in the long run, a well-thought-out aquatics facility will benefit this community. Like Tag was saying, the Warren, Warrington facility is a multi-use facility. It has a slide for the kids, for families to come, birthday parties, and it also has a competitive side for us, a little bit more overachieving swimmers and who like to make the best of, best of our health. And it is a very health-related activity. And I, and I know some more members that are sitting up there who have, their children have benefited from swimming. So I just am up here to, for you all, to consider keeping this in the Capital Improvement Plan and to really, really think about it. It's definitely needed to make our community a better, healthier, and more successful place. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Victoria Reese, and I'm a 16-year-old junior at Charando High School, and I've been a swimmer for most of my life. Having a new aquatic facility here probably would not impact me at all, but I can speak from numerous occasions that having one aquatic facility in Winchester has impacted me on various occasions. I can remember, I actually don't swim high school anymore, but last year, we had high school practices starting at 9:15 at night and going until 10 o'clock. And that, with a rigorous academic schedule, is very, very hard to take, and that kind of affected my decision to not swim this year. And I know that so many other people in this community have the same problem as I do and have decided to swim or haven't. And I know in the future that having a new aquatic facility, they'd have better practice times, and more people would have the opportunity to swim, which is such, it's so good for you, and it really has positively impacted my life in so many ways. It's taught me so much more than how to be healthy. It's taught me how to keep at things and be courageous when I don't want to do something. And I think it's something you should, definitely should consider, and I know I can speak for numerous other high school students who couldn't be here tonight. Also, the fact it is a lifetime sport, and I know having practice times, constantly taking up a lot of the pool time prohibits a lot of older people, adults, from swimming. My grandma, who's actually 85, swims a mile a couple of times a week, and I'm not sure if she could do it in a pool like ours because, A, it's crowded, B, the air quality, and C, there's just not enough time to do it in pools like ours. And I think having a new aquatic facility would definitely benefit so many members of the community in the future. And thank you for considering having a new aquatic facility, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. I do feel that we've been thinking about this for a long time, haven't we?
Twenty-plus years.
Yes, yes. I will tell you this, that the Planning Commission really has a, not an easier job, but we, what we need to do is to say, yes, the facility like this is, comes through parks and recs. There are your angels. Comes to us from parks and recs. Our job is to make sure that it meets the Comprehensive Plan. It does not, we don't have to worry about the money part, so that's for the Board of Supervisors. So maybe that makes you feel a little bit better. All righty. I'd be glad to hear anybody else who would like to speak to this or anything else that's in the Comprehensive Plan, the schools, the airport, so many good things. All righty, we will close the public comment portion on the Capital Improvement Plan.
Madam Chair, I'm one of the individuals that have had a long history with swimming. Two daughters that swam for the Winchester Swim Team, Charando High School. I think one of them still might even hold some of the records at Charando High School for the Butterfly. And swimming in college, and the one youngest one is now a professional triathlete, probably a lot due to her growing up being a swimmer. And she's 31, now going on 32. So swimming is something that is a lifestyle enhancer, and I would probably be flagrant if I didn't strongly endorse the pool. I may have been the one that actually got it put on the Capital Improvements Plan 20-plus years ago. But I also would like us, the Planning Department, to make sure that the Board of Supervisors understands the amount of support that's in the community. And even though a lot of the support tonight was from swim teams, younger kids, high school, high school swimmers, swimming is a great thing for older adults, maybe like a few of us up here on the Planning Commission who are retired now. If you go out to the Wellness Center in the middle of the day, you see a lot of people with white hair out there in the pool swimming. It's a, it is a lifestyle enhancer. It's great for your physical fitness, extending your life and, and all that good stuff. So please pass on to the board that there was a lot of support tonight, and I would encourage as many people that are able, that are interested in the indoor aquatic center to please come out and attend the Board of Supervisors meeting so they understand the community support. And it's, you know, it's not just a couple hundred people, it's thousands of people that swim, and it can also be a moneymaker. I remember running some swim meets at the park here in Winchester where we'd have three or 4,000 people from out of town came into Winchester, stayed in hotels, ate in restaurants for three nights, and that makes pretty good money for the local community.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Everything else in the Capital Improvement Plan is also good.
Also very good. Any comments by Planning Commissioners, any questions of anybody? Well, I think we ought to, we need to do two things really, is to send this on to the Board of Supervisors and also to, to commit to the fact that it does meet the needs of the Comprehensive Plan.
Madam Chair, I move that we send this to the Board of Supervisors with a positive endorsement and also confirming that it meets the intent of our capital improvements, of our Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Don Lap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 25th of February. All righty.
Madam Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from the next two items as I provided some consulting services.
Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing item. It's the 2030 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPPA 01-14, Blaine Properties Sewer and Water Service Area Inclusion. And this is a change to the, or a suggested change to the SWASA. Sorry about that, everything is in initials, but Sewer and Water Service Area Boundary to include seven new parcels and 140 acres. These properties are currently designated in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan for future commercial and industrial land uses. The properties are generally located south of Cedar Hill Road, Route 671, north of Hopewell Road, Route 672, and west of Interstate 81, and they're located in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. The properties for which the initial Comp Plan request came in are, of course, the Blaine Properties, and they're highlighted on the screen to your left with a black outline. Those properties, as you mentioned, are just south of Cedar Hill Road, and that is west of Interstate 81 in Stonewall Magisterial District. And of course, from this exhibit, you can actually see the green line, which is the current boundary of the Sewer and Water Service Area. So that's the location map for the two Blaine properties. Now, those properties are currently designated with a commercial and industrial land use designation and part of the Northeast Land Use Plan. That's depicted on the screen again to your left there, the same property, same area, with the current land use plan on, on display. So when this project, this proposal came on in, through the ongoing discussion, the proposed amendment was modified somewhat to not only look at the Blaine properties, but to look at the other properties in the area. So the proposed amendment to change the Sewer and Water Service Area Boundary includes approximately 140 additional acres in the vicinity of the Blaine properties to include those listed there and that you described earlier. Now, that results in the map that you see to your left, which is the proposed change to the Sewer and Water Service Area Boundary within the Northeast Land Use Plan. And you can see from this that the, the green line, if you will, which is the Sewer and Water Service Area Boundary, moves west from Interstate 81 along Cedar Hill Road and incorporates the Blaine properties, and then goes south, again, bringing in the properties that are currently designated with an industrial and commercial land use designation, all the way down to Hopewell Road. So again, that's the proposed change to the Sewer and Water Service Area, extending it for approximately an additional 140 acres. The second map, hopefully you can see it a little bit, but the intent was to just kind of hatch out the area to show you where the change in the Sewer and Water Service Area Boundary was, to show you where the extra 140 acres are. When we were here in front of you as a discussion item a month or two ago, the acreage was a little bit larger than that, and we recognized that through the ongoing mapping changes that the acreage was not 430, it was 140 acres. So that, just to avoid any confusion ongoing, it's definitely 140 acres for the parcels that are listed in the agenda this evening. Okay. So the map that we just looked at was, of course, endorsed by the Comp Plan Committee at their November meeting. It included not just the Sewer and Water Service Area Boundary, but some slight adjustments to the road alignment to make sure it was in a central location, and also to the industrial and commercial colors, the land use designations, again, to provide that consistency. So those minor adjustments are part of this amendment. In addition, the Comp Plan Committee suggested language which describes the land uses in this area, also describes the north-south road, and describes the flexibility that should be offered in the final balance and location of the land uses. It also continues by making sure that future rezoning applications shall adequately address the potential impacts to community facilities and in particular, transportation. So again, that was the recommendation of the Comp Plan Committee, and that's what was discussed as we moved it through the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors as a discussion item. So that's all part of the public hearing and the amendment here this evening. We're seeking a Planning Commission recommendation that goes on to the Board of Supervisors on this item here this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have at this time.
Yes. Questions with Mr. Ruddy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a, is the applicant wishing to address us in any way?
I think while it was an initial application for the Blaine properties, it perhaps took on a life of its own and then added so it was a broader Comprehensive Plan amendment.
Okay, understand. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding this change to the Sewer and Water Service Area? Anyone at all? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is the, is the, does the Commission have any other thoughts about, about this item? I'll tell you one that nags at me a bit, and it's this whole issue of Sewer and Water Service Area, the capacity of the system to serve it. And I am really concerned, and I think there were a number of us who were talking about the fact that we are adding more and more property and not, at this point, really being able to determine if, in fact, that service is available. I leave that for what it is, but I will just cease. Any other comments? No? Someone is going to have to take care of the Stonewall Magisterial District for this item.
Madam Chair, if there are no other comments, I'd recommend that the Planning Commission move for approval of CPPA number 01-14, Blaine Properties Sewer and Water Service Area for the inclusion of the multiple properties that have been advertised.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Don Lap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes, votes yes. This will also go to the Board of Supervisors on February the 25th. Our next item is an action item, and it's rezoning 05-14 CB Ventures LLC, submitted by CB Ventures LLC, to rezon 2.42 acres of property from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B2 General Business District with Proffers. The property is located at 1033 Ailer Road in Stevens City, and it's identified by property identification numbers 74-A-104 and 74-A-105 in the Apeken Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from the session.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As you mentioned, this is brought back as an action item at the January 7th Planning Commission meeting. After the public hearing and a great deal of discussion between the applicant, the Planning Commission, and members of the public, it was tabled for 45 days, and that's why we're here, here this evening. The properties are, again, highlighted on the screen to your left with a black outline. They front directly on Ailer Road in this location, just north of Hyde Court. You can see from the next map, which is- You can see from the next map, which is the land use map, that shows the current zoning and land use, if you will, in that area, again, with the parcels. Identified that it's the existing B2 is located further south on Fairfax Pike 277. The surrounding properties, north and south of this, contain the B1 zoning designation. And I think you can see to the rear is the residential, the RP Residential Performance District of the Plymouthens neighborhood. It gives you the location and the current zoning. Since the Planning Commission's public hearing, we have received a modified proffer statement from the applicant, and that was in your agenda package. And the applicant has modified it in two regards. First, they've prohibited two uses, the first being gasoline service stations and the second being veterinary offices. In addition to that, the applicant has provided a proffer that limits the height of hotels that may go on future B2 property to 50 feet in height. That's as opposed to 60 feet, which is the allowance in the B2 district. Again, the height is, height limitation is 35 feet in the B1 and 35 feet in the B2, but in the B2, you're allowed to go up to 60 feet for hotels and office buildings. So those are the two modifications to the proffer statement. It's in your agenda package and it's appropriate form according to the county's attorney's The applicant also provided a couple of exhibits that were in your agenda. One is a general cross-section, which shows relative, you know, a relative cross-section of the proposed buffer location, the existing single-story and two-story residential homes, and a potential hotel office building, again, to the, to the left there, to give you some general relationship as to the scale. Now, it's recognized there that there's some existing trees that are shown that are relatively large on the depiction. That doesn't, it's not a full buffer in that location. You can see that the proposed buffer trees are relatively small when you compare that to the size of the, the building. And I think it's important to recognize that the existing single-family residential might be a little bit closer than what's depicted on this exhibit. The applicant also provided a photograph, and I wanted to put this in the agenda, which shows the existing property for which the rezoning is being requested and the residential land uses to the rear. So this evening, we're seeking the Planning Commission's recommendation on the rezoning. And as it was before, I think the overall take on the Planning Commission should be to determine if the neighborhood character of the area will be adversely impacted, and the impacts have been adequately addressed with this rezoning. I think it's clear that the applicant has modified the proffer statement, but the height limitation of 10 feet and just a couple of uses probably falls a little bit short of the discussion that we were hearing during the Planning Commission meeting. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. Mr. Browning is here tonight representing his rezoning application, if you have any questions of him.
Would you go back to the, that not to scale little sketch that was there? And I assume there's probably a reason it wasn't to scale.
If we can zoom in if need be, but I think the applicant provided a general 35-foot, 50-foot height exhibit there that shows the potential for office building and hotel buildings.
What concerns me more is what's on the right side of the screen. Because, you know, if you look at a 50-foot hotel or a 35-foot office building, either one of them are going to dwarf the two-story, single-family houses that are behind them and actually lower in elevation than they are. So, you know, it's bad enough that they're going to be taller than the housing next to them. They're at a higher elevation already, so that 50-foot hotel is going to look like it's 75 or 80 feet tall from the backyards of the people behind it. And there's no buffer that's going to change that.
Indeed. And I think the exhibit shows the proposed buffer trees and the fence at probably a relative scale to the size of the building and the residential and the slope, and that's take away an existing tree, an existing evergreen tree, and it might speak for itself.
Okay, thank you.
I just got one question for you.
Yes, Mr. Unger.
Mike, at the last meeting, Chris had asked for some drawings, and I guess I was expecting something a little better or different than that. But I couldn't agree with Roger more. That's very overwhelming for anybody that would live behind there, and even if it's 50 feet's still real tall to me, I just can't, I wouldn't want that sitting in front of my house, is what I'm trying to say. It's, I was expecting maybe something that would make it look different, but I guess you can hardly do that. It's more than I was expecting.
So, Mike, any questions of the applicant? This is an action item, so we've already held the public hearing, as I said earlier. So this is the time that the Planning Commission does its work, and the applicant is here if we have questions of him. Right. Bill?
I can't, I can't support this. You know, I really would like to be able to, but that sketch just even makes it look worse than what I thought it was. You know, that, that community's been there for a long time. I've been in Frederick County now for almost 40 years, and that community was there before I moved here. The rest of the, the road there along Ailer Road is B2 or B1 beside it. It's just that, that large of a building is not compatible with the residential area and even the rest of the businesses along there. Without more significant proffers, I just couldn't, I can't support it. And that's, I mean, that's what I said the last, at the last meeting, and that's why I asked it to be tabled. So I just, I can't support it.
Any other comments?
Madam Chairman, I have to echo Commissioner Thomas's thoughts completely. I, you know, we kind of bounced around the idea, what is it, a hotel? Was it an office building? We haven't a clear answer of either one. When you have the amount of opposition that we've heard here to it, I'm familiar with that area, built in that area for years. I agree with Roger wholeheartedly that some things just don't fit. They're just, it's just a square box putting it into a round hole concept to me, and I just can't support it at this time either.
Madam Chair, I'd agree with everything I've heard from, from my colleagues. I think, you know, the, the point that was raised about the intent of the B2 district previously, I think is a really good one. And I think this scenario speaks to why B2 is appropriate or desired in large areas or larger areas, because the impacts of these structures that are allowed can be mitigated. There's enough room to do it. And this site is just too small to be B2 appropriately, in my opinion, and I think consistent with the way the ordinance is structured. So I, I can't support this either.
Any comments from the right?
I guess the only thing I'm thinking is, you know, they eliminate a veterinarian clinic. I would have 10 times rather seen that there than a big hotel.
There's already one just down the street.
Yeah, we already have.
I know there's two motels down there, too.
Yeah. Side, yeah.
Well?
If there's no additional discussion, Madam Chair, I move that we recommend disapproval of rezoning 05-14 CB Ventures LLC.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Don Lap, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the board of supervisors on March the 11th, and it was to recommend disapproval of the application. Our next item is an information discussion item, and it deals with farm breweries. And this is a discussion on revisions to the zoning ordinance to include farm breweries with farm wineries, consistent with state code.
Mrs. Perkins? Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. You may remember back in 2009, there was a state code changed for an allowance for farm wineries, and there was an amendment that came before you to include those as a permitted use in the RA district. Well, in 2014, another revision to the state code was approved to include farm breweries as, as a use that we need to include as well. So the amendment before you proposes to amend the farm winery text to also include farm breweries as a permitted use in the RA with a list of their permissible activities. Now, there's a, two sheets before you. I would note that the two sheets are what was endorsed by the DRC. Unfortunately, that didn't get put into your commission agenda, so please defer to the, the attachment. So what the, the paper in front of you shows, it's the amendment to include farm breweries. There's two definitions. One is for the farm breweries and another revised definition for farm wineries, just to defer what they are back to the state code in case the state code changes in the future. There's provisions for tasting, sales, preparation of food, as well as special events. There's a revision to the maximum number of people permitted at the special events. Now, this is consistent with the festival permits requirement, the festival permit requirements for the county. And there's also a revision to the site plan requirement. The current ordinance requires site plans for all farm wineries. We scaled that back to make it not a requirement, but more really as a need basis. So the DRC reviewed this at their January meeting, and they sent it forward to the Planning Commission. So tonight, we are seeking comments to forward to the board of supervisors. Be glad to answer any questions.
Comments for Mrs. Perkins to take back? Yes, Mr. Oates?
Candace, at the committee, we also were asked about adding distilleries for our poorer corn and potato producers.
Still looking into that.
Looking into it, okay. Just seems like since we have brewery and wine up there, now we might as well make the big three.
Yeah. And my question was similar to that. Could they distill moonshine?
That's not considered a brewery.
It is a brewery. I mean...
Distilled liquor, I believe. Yeah.
Well, moonshine is a liquor. And I think we ought to allow it. That's what, I was just curious.
County Attorney slash Administrator.
West Virginia, West Virginia has some of the, if you go to Sweet Shine up here, they have the best limoncello made with moonshine you'll ever find.
I'll look into that along with the distilleries.
We, we just lost...
We just lost control here.
Administrator. Okay.
I'd still like to see us pursue if we could add distillery to it and just go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Give it a trifecta there.
Candace, I have just one question. There's the provision that the zoning administrator may require a site plan. What circumstances would differentiate between a brewery that would require a site plan and one that, that wouldn't in the farm setting?
We really wanted to be able to base it on the scale of when something came in, whether or not we felt it needed a, a site plan. Because under the current text, all of them, all farm wineries need to have a site plan. And we found that with the smaller ones coming in, it's not really a necessary thing. But if you're going to have a much larger commercial operation, then you may want to have a site plan. But if it's just a small agricultural operation, you don't really need a site plan. It'll be on a, it'll be a case-by-case basis.
If you open for the public, then you probably need to fight site plan for parking, but...
Well, and you, and you get different treatment. I know, you know, farm, farm wineries in a lot of scenarios are, are treated more like agriculture, and in some jurisdictions or places, site plans aren't required. I mean, there may be grading permits, things of that nature, and zoning permits, but not necessarily some of the other things. And so that was kind of my, my question on the one hand, you know, the, what's the trigger, you know, so that there is some certainty, you know, for folks? I mean, just so it's, you know, not too, too loose and debatable, so folks feel like they may be getting, you know, different treatment if they're essentially the similar use or the same use. So that would be my, my only caution on, on that. I think there should be some flexibility, and certainly in an agricultural setting, to make it as easy as possible, you know, but the "may" require, I could, I could see that being a, a challenging situation.
We can update that.
And in my experience in the past, it's been if you've got enough public involved, where you have to have ADA bathrooms, parking spots, and you need to have site plan for inspections review. But I'd say if it's not open to the public, it shouldn't be required to have a site plan.
Right.
Yeah. Two, two more questions. On paragraph C, you have special events only permitted of wineries or farm breweries of 10 acres or larger. What's considered a special event?
Festivals.
Okay, so wine tasting, things they would have for club members, that's not a special event?
I mean, usually, we, we wouldn't include like weddings or things like that as a special event. It would really just be festivals, large planned events.
Something that's not normal with that.
Correct.
And then the other, any event which more than 100 people are anticipated would require a festival permit. That only applies to special events, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
One, Candace, did you answer Roger's question about moonshine?
I have to look into that.
Wheels turning down there, Greg? Are your wheels turning down there?
I like the idea.
Well, the reality is, does anybody know anybody who grows hops around here? I just thought I'd ask.
Important, bring it in.
Right.
Might start.
Okay, have you got enough?
Thank you.
Dear, dear, dear. Let's see. Do you have more for us? And that's great. The next one is the R4 district permitted uses, and this is a discussion on revisions to the zoning ordinance to include the OM Office Manufacturing District and the permitted uses in the R4 district. Mrs. Perkins?
Again, thank you. As you stated, this is a very minor revision to include the OM district in the R4 district allowed uses. Really what happened is when the OM district was created a few years ago, it just, it wasn't incorporated into the R4. So currently, the R4 allows RP, B1, B2, B3, and M1 uses. So keeping in that, the OM would also be a good fit for that list. So, consistent with the R4 requirements, any uses would still be identified during the rezoning and master plan stage. So the DRC reviewed this in January, sent it forward to the commission. So tonight, we're seeking comments to forward to the board.
Comments? What did DRC say?
Yes, it was appropriate. OM kind of falls between M1 and B3, so it made sense.
I think that's all you're going to get? Okay. Our next item is also an information discussion item, and it's permeable pavers. And it's revisions to the zoning ordinance to include the use of permeable pavers for parking lots.
Again, thank you. This is another minor ordinance amendment to include permeable pavers in the list of allowable surface materials for parking lots. Currently, the ordinance only allows the permeable pavers to be used in overflow, so you can't use it in any of your required parking areas. It has to be over and beyond your minimums. So due to a lot of the new stormwater management regulations, there's need for more options. So that's where this request originated from. So really what this request does, it would just move the permeable, permeable pavers from the overflow to the permitted use section to allow them for, for a general use. So again, the DRC reviewed this in January. They agreed with the change, sent it forward to the Planning Commission. So again, seeking comments to forward to the board.
Yes.
In, for the permeable pavers, do they still have to do a strength analysis for the section of the pavement? Putting permeable pavers on just compacted natural soil?
I mean, they would still have to have an engineer, you know, prepare the plan, submit it to art department. It'll have to go through Public Works, has standard details associated with it, because it would need, it would have to be strong enough to support what the intended use is. If there's a certain requirement, I can add it in if you would like.
Well, I mean, when you design a pavement, you design it for a load, and you end up with a subbase and a base course material based on a CBR factor and... Curious if we're going to make the same requirement for the permeable pavers and also for the pavers themselves. for the paver that we don't end up with a paver that in two or three years is just a bunch of sand on top of...
Roger, the... Under the new ordinance, permeable pavers are called a B... Or considered a BMP, so they have to be inspected by an engineer every two years. It might go every one year, but... So if it turns to sand, they're going to have to tear it all out and replace it.
Okay. You can tell them about it.
And the permeable paver section, everything I've seen is always between 18 and 24 inches of stone under it.
Except for the wall.
Storage.
Yeah. That's why I was just asking to make sure that we had something in there to... So that we don't end up with a bunch of ruts and...
Yeah. Now, the purpose of it is for stormwater, so it's a BMP that would be inspected regularly.
Did it do it for you?
Candace, I do have a question for Gary. I think you know this answer. Gary, what happens over the years when those cracks fill up with dirt and what have you?
Well, there... You're supposed to have a maintenance schedule for them on the site plan. So every five to 10 years, they need to be vacuumed and new gravel put in.
Okay. That makes sense.
As far as that inspection, it has to be done all the time.
Okay.
I think permeable pavers are a good idea. I just want them to last.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're at the end of our agenda. I will find it... Happiness suggests that we'll see each other soon. So we look forward to the retreat that will occur this Saturday if stuff in the sky doesn't fly. If that happens, we have a reserve plan, and that reserve plan is we're not going to cancel the March 5th meeting. So in case we need that time, we can scoot... In other words, if we can't get through or get to our retreat on the 21st, we have some extra time in our schedule that we can do these things. Does that make sense? I think this is it.
Move for adjournment.
All opposed? Thank you all.